Good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining the meeting on Focus Springfield. I wanna, oh, it's already recorded. Thank you. So we are recording. I'm going to get started because we have a really robust agenda. And I want to try to get through it all. So we're gonna go ahead and get started. I want to thank Counselor Hurst, Counselor Click, and Counselor Allen for joining us. Thank you, Attorney Kinsey, former counselor as well. Thank you, Pat, Chris, Tim, Sheen, Molly, Kathy, Alvin, Jerry, Lindsay. And I think that's our focus for joining us. But we are gonna go ahead and get started. And so we will call the Finance Subcommittee to order at 5:32 PM. And we'll get started with the July Revenue versus Expenditure Report from Pat Burns.
Thank you, Councilor Whitfield. Tonight I'll be presenting the July Revenue versus Expenditure Report. The major outstanding issue we still have from fiscal year 22 is the net school spending carryover amount. You'll see there's a partial income, a partial appropriation of $2 million. We're working to finalize that number. I'm working with the School Department on that. The number's gonna be close to $20 million from what I'm estimating. And hopefully I'll have the June report for our next meeting in October.
The, we didn't do June?
No, I haven't been able to finalize it until we can get that number.
Okay.
Year-end amount.
So our revenue is under by 721 million?
Yes, that's just because we're in the first month of the fiscal year, so.
Oh, July, yeah, okay. That makes sense. Got it, got it, got it. Okay. And our expenditures are over by 39 million. Is there a reason for that?
The, the driving factor there is the pension payment that we make every year in July. So this year that was 82.3 million, of which 57.1 was on the city side and 25.2 was from the school department.
Okay. All right, understandable. Any questions from counselors on the Revenue versus Expenditure Report? Counselor Click, thank you for joining your first Finance Subcommittee meeting. Did you have, I mean, I know you know all these documents and seen them plenty of times, but did you have any issues going through anything?
No question. That's his time, counselor.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have the Walker grandstand for 3 million.
I guess I can, Pat Sullivan was supposed to be on the call. I'm not sure.
Oh, wait, hold on, Kathy, one second, because I didn't see Counselor Allen's hand. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see him either. Counselor Allen?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. Just a follow-up with Pat. Pat, so we did make the payment, the $82 million payment.
Yes, that was made on July 1st.
Because last year we delayed it and we split it in half or something, right?
That was actually two years ago.
Two years ago.
We've made the payment on the agreed upon July 1st, the last two fiscal years.
Excellent.
Years ago, we delayed it due to the pandemic, thinking we would have some cash flow issues.
Right. No, that's fine. I know we caught up on that. All right, that's, that's great. Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure of that. Thank you. I'll sit here.
All right, thank you. All right, Kathy, we'll circle back to you. Pat's not on as of right now. Just do the best you can.
Okay, so this was an earmark. It was, it's actually HUD money, and that's why I'm involved.
Okay.
I didn't volunteer to be part of Pat's team. I was drafted because it is through HUD and it is in their, one of their databases that I'm already on and I know how to do, so I am doing this. It's actually 3 million that was earmarked for the grandstand, and this 3 million is gonna deal with, from my understanding, the envelope, the outside. It's gonna redo doing the netting, the roofing, the, you know, securing it, et cetera. And he has a whole plan to redo all of the grandstand, and there's other funding sources that he is applying for. I don't know. I know, and he will be at the council meeting. I don't know the other sources he's secured so far, but this is the first 3 million. This is gonna do a lot of the roofing and the netting and the structure itself.
Okay. All right. Any questions on that? And that's that baseball field, correct?
Correct. That's the baseball stadium.
Okay. Any questions from counselors? All right, CNN, we will move on to the next item on the agenda. Hold on one second, because I lost it. The next item on the agenda is the Old Hill Info Project for 2 million.
Yes, hi, Jerry McCafferty here on this one. This is a competitive grant from Mass Housing under their Neighborhood Stabilization Program. They are awarding us money, and we are combining it with city-owned lots to develop new housing, new homeownership housing, single-family homes that will be affordable to households with income at or below 100% of area median income. We're partnering with Home City Development on this. They were selected by an RFP at, before we did the, the application to Mass Housing. And so we're looking to develop these over the next year or so.
Okay. Any questions on this funding?
No questions.
Okay. All right, CNN, we'll move on to FY23 State 911 Support and Incentive Grant for 992,816.
Thank you, Counselor. I don't see anybody from the Fire Department here, so I can speak to this one.
Okay.
So this is the annual disbursement for the 911 Support and Incentive that we get from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security. It's just under $1,992,816. And it goes towards a variety of expenses related to running the Emergency Communications. And we generally use it solely for the purpose of personnel salary and overtime offsets for the department.
Thank you, Lindsay. Any questions? All right. Anyone? Okay. All right, CNN, we have the Homes Project Pilot Grant. No match or 500,000?
Yes, hello again. This is, it's actually called the City of Homes Pilot. This is an earmark from the state. This is specifically to develop vacant housing, whether it's city-owned vacant housing or housing that code enforcement is is pursuing due to failure to make repairs and that will eventually go toward this project. The funding, they're looking, we're looking for an investment as well from the Mass Mutual Foundation. This is going before them next month. And I think this earmark was seen as sort of a down payment on starting to pull together the funds for this pilot project. As I said, the goal is to get control of remaining vacant houses and rehab them and then sell them to, as affordable homeownership. You know, it is often through receivership. Our receivership program has, in the past, led to often the receivers becoming owners and owning them as rental properties. This was a way to, we worked closely with Judge Dean, retired Judge Dean Fine, to think about how we could work with the program to get the homes into homeownership instead of going toward rental housing. And, and this is the program, and this earmark is the first $500,000 to operate it.
Thank you, Jerry. This is all vacant properties and?
These will be vacant. This is only vacant, vacant homes, vacant one-to-four family homes.
One-to-four family, because I remember asking for that list, and I was just told, oh, we can't pull it together. We don't know where it's at, ba-ba-ba. But there is a list of the vacant homes in the city of Springfield, correct?
Um, we, we have some code enforcement records around vacant homes. We haven't, there's not homes identified for this project at this point. Because much of it is going through code enforcement and will go through Housing Court, and it is kind of pulling together the resources so that when we reach the point where we have a vacant home in court, we have the funds to redevelop it.
And then once you redevelop it, will it be for sales?
It will be for sale to a homeowner. Yes.
To a homeowner. Any type of low-income homeowner program or?
I believe the restriction we're looking at on this is also 100% of area median. There's gonna be multiple funding sources. So far, it's 100% area median income. There may be other sources that require 80% area median income. But so, as I said, so far, it's 100%.
And for the vacant home redevelopment, will that, will that process go out to bid?
We, we selected, so in the spring, we, as we're putting together the components of this project, we knew we were getting the earmark, and we looked for a developer to work with. So we put out a request for, for qualified developer, and Wayfinders applied and was selected. So we anticipate that Wayfinders will bring, actually will bring the properties to the project. They will work in how, with the Housing Court to purchase the properties that are otherwise slated to go into receivership. They will purchase them, rehab them, and sell them to affordable homeowners, you know, sell them.
Purchased them from the receiver, like pay the receiver, whatever they did?
They purchased them from the owner of the property. So the idea is, you know, receivership forces someone out, but it, and it takes value away from the owner. This is, you know, owners who are not able to take care of their property for whatever, although most of them, I think, we still believe will be institutional investors, but, you know, banks that are holding properties that are not doing anything with them. This will offer to purchase them at, at fair market value. They purchase, they rehab, and they sell it to an affordable homeowner. I mean, a homeowner, you know, that meets the affordability criteria.
Thank you, Jerry. Counselor Allen?
I was just wondering, thank you, Madam Chair. I was just wondering if the, if this is for a specific area of the city, or is it for people under a specific income level? And is it an opportunity people haven't had before? So two or three questions in there.
So I don't think the earmark is, has, has rules around that. The earmark was very broad. But the idea of the program is to focus the work in qualified census tracts. So those are the same areas that are available for ARPA funding and our areas that have usually, it generally suffered from disinvestment. So the program as a whole will target those areas. And the second part of this was sort of the benefit, I think, around the benefit that we get from this. The, the benefit is the threat of receivership is a way to get control of the property. Because an owner who's otherwise sitting on a vacant property and not doing anything with it, they're being told by the court, either fix this or sell it, do something with it, essentially. Don't leave it sitting vacant in the neighborhood. And then these funds come in because often the cost of rehab for these properties, even with increased values right now, the cost of rehab is usually higher than the cost to sell the house to a homeowner who's at an affordable, you know, who's at 100% area median income. So this puts the money in to give the developer the, the money to, to do the full rehab of the house, especially a vacant house usually has, you know, lots stripped out of the inside, and it's generally in pretty poor condition. So it will allow to do a quality rehab and then sell it. There will be some subsidy that stays in the property to make the, to make the whole project work. So that money from the state, the earmark money will, you know, it'll be a revolving fund, but some will stay in each property.
And is it your area that manages this process and selects the owners, the new owners, or?
We are, so what we're gonna be requiring is that they do a lottery, which is how we've been selling anything we are developing these days. We develop a lottery process where people who can qualify for the home apply. And then there is, you know, a randomness of who among the qualified people are selected to, to get a level of fairness because they're able to buy a house under the market value of it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Counselor Hurst?
I'm sorry. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick question, Jerry. Why, why Wayfinders?
They were the entity that applied when we put out the request for a qualified developer.
Okay. They were the only entity that applied?
They were the only entity that applied. I'm sorry, no. I apologize. This was a number of months ago. I think there was another entity that applied that was not a nonprofit developer. And we believed that to be competitive in the other grant funding that will pull into this, that we needed an entity that was a nonprofit. So the other one did not meet the qualifications.
Got it. I guess my hope is that it'd be nice if we could have the Wayfinders of the world work with other individuals who are involved in this business to help sort of maximize those folks that are, you know, that are already doing this work, that, you know, could certainly use additional business and probably employ more folks from the community than potentially a Wayfinders who might not ordinarily be employed, so.
Well, actually, as part of the request for proposals, they needed to talk about preferences in hiring Springfield residents, preferences in hiring people of color and women-owned businesses. So they've made a number of commitments around that. And, and I should, you know, just separately, I want to say, actually, today, Mass Housing held an emerging developers conference or listening session, I guess I should say, that was specifically around Black Indigenous people of color developers in Springfield and brought in a number of people and sort of started, the conversation was about what the barriers are and what steps we can be taking, we and the state can be taking to overcome those barriers. So, and, and part of that was a lot of talk about partnership and partnering with some of these larger developers who are nonprofits, and the, the nonprofits, I would say, the big ones in Springfield being Wayfinders and Home City Housing are very, both express strong commitment to wanting to build the developer community in Springfield. So I'm coming away from this today feeling very optimistic about that, actually.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry, any other questions? All right. Thank you. Moving on to the MGC Parking Garage, 300,000, no match.
Thank you, Counselor. This is the second phase of planning work that we have undertaken to look at the parking resources in the area between State Street to the north, Union Street to the south, Willow Street to the east, and Main Street to the west. There are a whole host of surface parking lots that exist down there, but yet the ongoing traffic or parking problems exist throughout that area for some of the service providers, Square One being an example. And we're looking to work with the property owners about how better to organize that surface parking lots into structured parking.
Thank you. So many questions. I forgot to recognize Council President Letterman and Counselor Fenton. Thank you for joining. All right, no questions, Tim. Off the hook. FY23 State 911 Training Grant, 256,105.96.
I'll take that one.
Are you skipping me, Lindsay? And Counselor?
I skipped you.
You skipped me.
Oh, my gosh.
I'll go home, and I'll stay home. I don't care.
Wait, I skipped you. Wait, there's Mass Trails Grant for?
That's us. That's us.
100,000, okay, all right. Okay.
I saw that. I saw that trick. That was quick.
Sorry. You're like, I want to get my turn. Lindsay, you're next, so.
Beautiful. Thank you, counselors. A couple of years ago, the Park Department with the DPW did a study for the Highland Trail, which is the abandoned rail line from East Lung Meadow to Springfield College. We applied for a grant through Department of Conservation and Recreation for 300,000. And what that 300,000 will do now, part of it will be used to make an application to Mass DOT for a formal project moving forward, what's called a PIF-PNF project, process, project initiation and project notification, excuse me. Once it becomes an approved project through Mass DOT, the remainder of the funds would be used for design. But then we would be starting the whole public participation process in the project. So until we have an approved project for Mass DOT, it doesn't exist. So the first step of this fund is to get that process rolling with DOT.
Gotcha. Thank you. Makes sense. Any questions?
One quick.
Process take about, Chris?
We may, we're trying to make an application in the next couple, three months, and depending upon when Mass DOT holds their hearing, I would probably guess sometime in the middle of January, we would hear about it being a formal project.
Okay.
And, and I, I, not to anticipate with Counselor Allen, I've been in contact with the East Forest Park Citizens Council. And once we have that approval, we'll get to a meeting with them, go over the project a little bit more and start talking about what the, you know, what the detail, more details of the project, once we know it's approved by MassDOT.
Madam Chair?
Sure, sorry.
Can I just reply to Chris? Yeah, Chris, they met last week. I was there. There were about eight or 10 people there. And it came up, and I'm glad to hear that we were, so this is a result of the feasibility study that we did through, with the CPA money three years ago.
Correct, yeah. This is the next step.
Following along, okay. And, all right, great. Glad to hear you guys are on it. Great. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. All right, next item is the FY23 State 911 Training Grant.
Okay, thank you. So this, again, is the annual funding we receive specifically for training from the executive, from EOPS, for this, for the Emergency Communications. It's a $42,000 increase over FY22. We've been getting this funding for more than a decade, and the eligible expenses for the grant are straight time and overpay for attendees attending training, seminars, memberships, software expenditures related to training and train, and travel expenses.
Any questions from counselors? All right, CNN, we'll move to the FY23 Springfield Library Foundation Trust Endowment, no match, 180,000.
Hi, Molly Farini here. How are you? Good, thank you. This funding is from the Springfield Library Foundation. We have a variety of trusts and endowments that the foundation manages for us, and these are all restricted to purchasing library materials. It contributes to, we spend about 650,000 a year on materials, so this is about 35% of it.
Is it for all branches?
Yes. There are only two restricted trusts. One is the Garvey Trust, and that's only for Forest Park. And we have a Rose Smith Fund, which is for music materials throughout the system, but the rest are for all libraries, yeah.
Any questions from Molly from counselors? Right. Thank you, Molly. Moving right along to CCLC Grant, 148,750. I guess that is the 21st Century Community Learning Centers Grant for?
Yeah, I don't know where Pat is, but I'll speak to this one. So this is for out-of-school-time programming at Samuel Bowles Elementary, and it's designed to help with proficiency, proficiency and opportunity gaps, increasing student engagement, social and emotional learning support, and to promote college and career readiness and success. It's a highly competitive grant program, and the Parks Department has received its grant in previous years. It pays for rec leaders and professional services and supplies.
So it's like an after-school program?
Yep.
All right. All right, makes sense. Any questions? Sounds a great program right there. FY23 Library Foundation Salary Offset for All Branches, 145,393.
Again, this is from the Springfield Library Foundation and commitment to helping the library with all of our operating expenses, and this is to offset our personnel services account for fiscal 2023.
Good grant, good grant. Thank you, Molly. Parks EEA Grant for Breckwood Pond Dam Base 2, 90,000.
Yes, so this is $90,000 for the engineering evaluation and analysis to assess the repair of Breckwood Pond Dam. And it will be a $120,000 project with a 20% match of $30,000 from Pago.
Okay, great. The FY22 Community Mitigation Specific Impact Grant, 41,300.
Okay, I wasn't expecting to work this hard tonight. Again, the Fire Department, this is a community mitigation specific impact grant from the Mass Gaming Commission for just over $41,000, and this is for the purchase of a Jaws of Life tool for the metro area downtown.
Okay. I don't see any hands. I'm gonna think, no questions. Springfield Library Foundation, Wi-Fi Hot Spots, 25,000, no match required.
For fiscal 22, we received 200 hotspots that we let paid Springfield patrons borrow. And that funding, that ends September 30th. So the Library Foundation is funding, the 25,000 will fund 100 of them. And our fiscal 23 budget that was passed by City Council, and they do, includes the funding for the other 100.
So the program is going well, then?
Yes, it's very, very, very well.
Good. Do they like rent them? Good. Do they like rent them out for a day or?
They get, I think it's three weeks. Um, and then, and everyone, you know, people return them. If they, for some reason, forget to return them, uh, we can, uh, stop the data, um, work. So then they do get, so they, they can work again. But they've been extremely popular. Yeah.
That's great. Thank you, Molly. Um, FY23 Shine Grant for $26,344.53?
Yes. So this is a grant awarded to, um, the Department of Elder Affairs. The city's been receiving this contract for over 25 years. Um, it is a regional program, so it covers Hampden County and Three Zip Codes and Hampshire County. Um, this is for the first quarter of the fiscal year. It supports current employee salaries and benefits. And the main objective of this program is for, Shine stands for serving the health insurance needs of everybody, of everyone. And it provides information screening and application assistance for low-income, um, seniors to get them the health insurance and benefits they need.
Okay. Nice. Um, Community Mitigation Grant, $16,000?
Okay. So these are smaller grants and they're used to not coming. So this is probably why they're not here, which is fine.
Yeah.
$16,000, again, from the Mass Gaming Commission. It's a, uh, specific impact grant for the Police Department. Um, and this is actually going to, um, cover the expenses for data connectivity improvements between the Metro Subdivision Office, the Metro Gaming Enforcement Unit and Pearl Street.
Gotcha. All right. And keep it moving. FY23 Springfield Library Foundation Brands Beautification Grant, $10,000?
Uh, that's funding for, um, to help us do some, uh, additional landscaping at, uh, Mason Square, East Springfield, 60 acres. And, um, also to do some programming related to, you know, growing plants and growing food. Um, so we're really excited to get that funded.
I like the food gardens out there. Grab stuff, you know? Um, thank you, Molly. The Parks EEA Greening the Gateway City Grant, $9,600. Is that trees?
It's trees.
Okay. We're gonna move on. Mary and John Brogan Endowment Grant Increase, $2,0787 for libraries.
Uh, we received $50,000 from, uh, Brogan Endowment to create a research center in our, our, uh, Wellman Hall at Central Library. And, uh, when we got our final estimates, we were over by that amount. So the foundation, uh, took that in so we could pay for it.
Nice. When is that scheduled to be done?
Uh, we're, well, we have some of it done. The carpeting has been done in that area and we purchased an additional microfilm reader because people, that's a really popular, um, service that we have and we've ordered all the furniture and we hope to have it in by the end of this, um, calendar year. That's the goal. So.
Very nice. Um, Grant of Tangible Property, let me see, 2022 Car Seat Distribution Program. You don't have to explain that. Self-explanatory. Car seats. Um, hold on. Oh, I clicked off. Dang it. Okay, um, Reserve for Contingency to City Clerks, $14,048.90.
Yeah. So I actually don't see the bill of prior year, um, on the agenda, but so there's going to be a bill of prior year for the City Clerk's Office to pay, uh, last, one of last year's advertising invoices for $14,000. And because that will really, uh, put a dent in the current advertising budget for the department, we're also requesting a transfer from our reserve for contingencies budget over to the Clerk's Office so they can make themselves whole by, after paying that, Bobby.
Okay. Thank you. Cause yeah, it doesn't say bills for prior year. So, okay. Um, Donation to the Police K-9 Unit?
Yes. I'm sorry.
Who was donated?
Um, Money $210.
Thank you.
Um, in memory of Barbara Ginon, Ginon.
Very nice. Thank you. Um, Order Approved Cottosil to Memorandum of Understanding for Valley Bike Share Ride. Okay.
Uh, good evening, Counselors.
Hi, Alan.
Hi. Uh, so it's just to explain the program. It's a, a bike share program. That's, um, that we have here in Springfield, but we have it in partnership with other communities up and down the Pioneer Valley, uh, between Hampton and Hampshire County. Um, currently we have 14 stations, 14 existing stations in the city, which are, uh, majority in, uh, downtown, north end, south end, in Mason Square. Uh, we are expanding this year with four, uh, four, um, additional stations to bring it up to 18. Those four additional will be in Old Hill, uh, Six Corners and as well as Forest Park. Um, but we also have in Q3, um, additional stations that would be, um, uh, installed in a Indian Orchard section of the city. And with the number increasing over 20, it then, I guess, pushes us up to another threshold. And so therefore we would have to pay, uh, more into the, the, the Valley Bike System, uh, at, at a cost of just under $1,400.
Okay. All right. Any questions on the bike share? I'm glad it's expanded. Means it's working. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Parks Department Donation for $298.95. We'll, we'll agree that we want that. Um, Order Authorized Mayor to Execute Quick Claim D for Sale of East Side Forest Hills Road to Thomas C. Perola III and Alicia Perola.
Yes. So these generally are on the Finance Subcommittee meeting, but, um, I can go over them and what I know of them. They were put on by the Law Department, um, sometimes, um, Housing puts them on too. But, um, these are two, well, this one and the next one are two, um, quick claim deeds. It's for the sale of Smaller Butter's Lot next to the purchaser. I know both of these are going to be used for side yards and gardening. Um, and I believe it's, uh, 10 cents per square foot. So you can see the cost of each. The first one is $2,000 and the second is just under $2,000, $1,898.80.
All right. Any questions on the quick claim deeds for the Butter Lots? All right. CNN, we moved very quickly through this meeting. Thank you, Lindsay. You worked hard today. Thank you, everybody, for joining us. Um, I'm gonna recommend, well, I'm not doing a recommendation because I do have some questions for some of the, um, bigger projects that Pat has and stuff. So, um, we'll just go ahead and in the meeting, and I thank everybody for joining us. Uh, do, do we make a motion? Make a motion to, um, in the meeting? I think Tim is the only one.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
To adjourn the meeting. Nice second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you.